We are back in session. Good evening. My name is John Samia and I'm the Chair of the Shrewsbury Select Board. On behalf of my fellow Board members in the Town Manager's Office, I want to welcome you to our June 25, 2024 meeting. Tonight's live broadcast is being brought to you by Mark Sarah of the Shrewsbury Media Connection. Tonight's meeting will also be available via the Shrewsbury Media Connection YouTube platform starting tomorrow, as well as all of our previous meetings are also currently available on the same platform like we do. But before we get into the preliminary matters, I'd like us to introduce ourselves for those watching us from home.
Carlos Garcia.
Michelle Conlon.
Beth Cassavan.
Kevin Misakar, Town Manager.
David Snowden, Assistant Town Manager.
Justin Dobson, Assistant to Town Manager.
And again, I'm John Samia and I'm Chair. Under preliminaries, next item on the agenda is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have been moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to review and act to approve the minutes of the June 11, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Have been moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is announcements. Colleagues, any announcements?
Mr. Chair, I've got a few. So-
Yes, please.
Just as a reminder to the community, the DEIB Committee will be hosting their first Pride Event tomorrow, four to seven at Dean Park. Also happening tomorrow virtually, the library is hosting a virtual program focused on the 1969 Stonewall Rebellion. And those who are interested in attending that virtual event can find the link on the Shrewsbury Public Library's website. That program will run from 6:30 to 7:30. Happening Thursday, the Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Committee will be at the Shrewsbury Summer Market, which is going to be at the Town Hall. Folks can visit them for crafts, giveaways, and information about Juneteenth, which is held on June 19 and commemorates the emancipation of slavery in our nation. And then the Selco Community Open House is scheduled for this Friday, June 28, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Selco's service area at 30 Municipal Drive. There will be fun learning activities and information for Shrewsbury residents of all ages. So I strongly encourage folks to attend any one of those events, or all of them.
Anything else?
I did just want to give a quick update on the Municipal Facilities Optimization Committee. So we've met two more times since our last meeting. One was a tour of the DPW and Water and Sewer and Town Hall. We spent three hours with our owner's project manager team going through the building to kind of take a look at what's there. And we also, the Select Board, recorded our Select Board Roundtable last Thursday. And the DPW garage, it's just a great way, I think, for residents to come to understand why we are bringing forward this capital project. And then last night, the committee met to talk about the architects that submitted to work on the project. And we'll be interviewing two architects at our meeting next week to bring an architect on board. So things are moving really quickly. I want to make sure that the public understands that, you know, we do have a tight timeline right now to get through the feasibility phase of this and make sure that the word gets out to the community that we are looking to do this project.
Great, thank you. Anything else? I just have a little more to add. So as Beth said, last Thursday, we taped our Select Board Roundtable at the DPW, covered a few subject matters, including capital planning, how ARPA funds we use instead of tax appropriated dollars or tax dollars from residents, and also the work that Beth and the others are doing right now is part of capital planning. And it's important to note that as a town, whether it's our strategic plan or capital planning over a five-year period, we're always planning. It's important to be able to pivot if something happens, but to be able to have the information at our fingertips, understand what our needs are, and still have to prioritize. So that work is ongoing. And if you were to watch any of the Finance Committee budget hearings, learn a lot more about planning and budgeting and throughout the process of our budget. It starts early and goes throughout the period. It's not just one month. It's a continuous planning process, looking at the information we have at that time and continue to make decisions. And if we have to evolve based on facts and circumstances, we have a lot of the thought processes done and planning in front of us. So I encourage folks to watch that. It was a very warm evening, but it was a good show. But we appreciate as well as DPW personnel staying late that evening, as well as Mark Sarah from Shrewsbury Media Connection, who also recorded our show. And then lastly, the deadline to apply for the Shrewsbury Development Corporation Board of Directors has been extended to July 16, 2024. The Board seeks applicants with backgrounds in law, finance, real estate, architecture, or planning, and local government to serve on this board, which is envisioned to be an important economic development arm for the town. To apply, please visit the town's website or contact the office of the Select Board. That is all that I have. Next item on the agenda is Town Manager's Report. Mr. Misakar.
Good evening, Board members. I have a few updates for you this evening. First and foremost, I wanted to make the public aware that we have been contacted by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Cities, as well as an operator of a shelter that will be opening at 235 Boston Turnpike. So this is the former Worcester City Motel. The state intends to close the current shelter at the former Days Inn in town. And they're changing models to a longer-term stay environment and considering all aspects of their shelter system. And they've identified 235 Boston Turnpike as a part of that plan moving forward. So it seems like the movement of individuals and moving into 235 Boston Turnpike will occur throughout the summer. And we'll, of course, work with all-town officials and continue our relationship with the state and this new provider to make sure that this is as smooth as possible, especially for those with school-aged children. So that will be happening this summer. Second, we had a bond rating call earlier today with Moody's. Now, as the Board knows, we're a AAA-rated bond community through Standard and Poor's. Moody previously rated, Moody's previously rated the town. And they reached out to us and asked for an opportunity to have a conversation with us to reconsider their AA2 rating of us. So that's their, there's two additional levels above that. They felt that, from what they've seen from afar of the town, that we'll likely see positive pressure on their rating, and they'd like to reconsider their rating of us. So we took them up on their offer and had a conversation with them this afternoon. And I think it went really well. And they indicated as much, and so did our financial advisor. So we should hear by the end of the week if they intend to adjust our rating. It would only be for the bonds that are already issued. We wouldn't use that rating going forward. But it's good news to see that people respect and understand our financial position and how strong we've become over the last few years. So I wanted to update the Board on that. And then finally, as we continue to evolve through this MBTA zoning district process, and we move in towards the fall town meeting, we have received word back on the economic feasibility analysis of that new district that we've submitted to the state. And based upon our consultant's analysis, we will be able to require 15% of the units that would be constructed in any of this area to be affordable. So this is greater than the 10% inclusionary zoning that we have. So even though the MBTA zoning itself doesn't require affordable housing, we thought it was important to include that from all the conversations that we've had with the Board and the Planning Board and the residents at large. So I'm happy that it's 15%. It's not the maximum, but the, you know, it's all based upon the economic analysis. And 15% was the greatest level that we were able to achieve through that. So happy to answer. Any questions?
Thanks. Any questions?
Yeah, so the affordability, is it 80%?
80%.
AMI?
Correct.
Any other questions? What are the next item on the agenda is public comment. Select Board Policy 31 offers citizens the opportunity to provide public comments during Select Board meetings on matters within our authority. No one has expressed a desire to speak this evening. However, going forward, if you would like to, please reach out to the Select Board Office and to the Chair by noon of the day prior to the meeting. You can reach out by written correspondence or email at selectboard@shrewsburyma.gov. Next item is under meetings, hearings. We have a 705 public hearing to review and act on the application of Gene Scaff, Scaff Vineyard and Winery, Inc., doing business as Broken Creek Vineyard, 614 South Street, for an alteration of premises to their farmer's winery pouring permit to include a delineated portion of the vineyard. So I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here this evening? I'd like to welcome you up. If you could introduce yourselves, please.
My name is John Scaff, 614 South Street. I'm the owner, co-owner of Broken Creek.
Good evening. I'm Jonathan Picklestein. I'm an attorney in Worcester with an office at 138 Green Street.
Thank you for coming. Could you talk about the alteration that you're seeking this evening? Provide a little detail about what is current and what you're looking for?
If you remember, I wasn't here at the meeting back in April of 2023, but Gene was here and applied for a transfer of license. At the time, the license included described premises, which was the building and the outdoor patio. Existing at the time were also the picnic tables, but they weren't specifically included in the license. When Gene signed the purchase and sale agreement to transfer the property or take it over, we were just transferring the existing license. We weren't asking for anything additional. It did come to light, however, after that, that the picnic tables, which had been in use, were not part of the circumscribed area of the permit. So we're here just to sort of ratify what had been previously in place, but had not been permitted. While we're here, however, we'd also like to include the vineyard area. And Gene will explain why. It has to do with the use of the picnic tables and the fact that a lot of the customers who come there like to take a stroll. And in order to do that with a glass of wine, the area itself has to be permitted. And in doing so, Gene has fenced in a perimeter around the area where wine would be allowed to be consumed, which would be out on the patio, out on the picnic tables, and then through the vineyard itself. But I'll let Gene describe what he has in mind.
Yeah, so the whole area is fenced in with an eight-foot fence for the deers in the first place. So the fence was there. So we kept, we're going to keep it in this area. And the reason we're doing that alteration is just so people, when they're sitting at the picnic table, which is literally 10, 15 minutes away from the vines, they always tend to walk to the vines and, you know, check it out and just to make it part of the experience. Also, during harvest season, we get a lot of volunteers that they come in and then they help us with the harvest. And then most of it is done around the barn, which is a little further from the picnic area, which is a little up the hill. When we do the harvest, we normally get to let the people try the wine that was made from last year's harvest for the specific type of grapes that we're picking that day. And we would like to go from, you know, serving a one-ounce tasting to be able to, you know, serve a glass of wine while they're sorting out the grapes and then get it ready to move down to the cellar for a crush. And also, we'd like, we do tours in the cellar, and people try the wine out of the barrel and all that. And then they'll have a glass of wine. And then after that, we'll go out to the vineyard to show them like the vines, how, you know, how we take care of it, and how the process works and all that. So we'd like them to be able to grab a glass of wine while we're doing that tour, too. So those are the reasons why we would like to include the vineyard area.
Just as an aside, Gene was mentioning about how he liked to increase from the one-ounce and just to make that clear. Along with the pouring license that he has with the town, he has a state winery license for the farm. And that includes the entire farm and allows the licensee to provide one-ounce samples, five of them in fact, five one-ounce samples to anybody who's on the premises at the time. So it's already allowed in a small sense. It was something that was probably, was previously done before Gene had purchased it and was an oversight when we applied for the original permit.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? I have one, but then I'll open it up after that. So is it current practice now for folks to walk around with wine? I know the picnic table area has been utilized and maybe a few more tables are there now than when you bought it, but generally that's where people have consumed. Has it been practiced in the past for folks to walk the vineyard, other than with the one-ounce tasting?
Well, they, sometimes they grab a glass of wine and walk to the vines that are their immediate, not until the town, you know, brought it up. I didn't know.
So are people under 21 allowed on the premises?
With their parents.
Okay. So one question I have is outside picnic tables within sight. So if, in the winery area, how would you know that alcohol wouldn't be consumed by minors once they get out of sight? Like, how would they walk around? It's spacious. How would that, would there be any control on that? Or what would the thought be, other than parenting, I get, but?
Mostly, the people that wander around, either they ask for permission. If they want to go like up the hill towards like the barn area, they all ask permission, which they can't just walk around. But normally, people that grab the glass of wine, they just walk to the vines that they like, right there. They don't wander all the way without supervision.
Okay. And how many, how many staff usually? So you have capacity of 49?
Yeah.
So what do you have usually for staff?
Four or five people.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a couple.
Yeah, please. Thank you.
So you're saying that the state license allows for a one-ounce pour to be consumed anywhere on the premises? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Up to five.
What was that?
Five, five, what he's saying is five one-ounce.
Up to five, up to five.
So you can ask for five one-ounce pours?
And carry five glasses of wine?
No, no.
No, no. What they do is, you know, you get one ounce and you're allowed to come back.
Oh, come back and get another ounce. Yeah, okay. That's a lot of walking. To kind of piggyback on what you're asking, is there any kind of signage that's there currently to prevent people from, you know, leaving the area where you're expecting that they're consuming alcohol or wine into the vineyards? Is there anything posted about, you know, no alcohol beyond this point? Anything like that? Is that something that you have or something do you plan to have, or?
We, as part of the application, you'll see, we fenced in an area within which the consumption of alcohol will be allowed and not beyond that. So it actually doesn't include the entire vineyard. It only includes the part of the vineyard, which is visible from the picnic tables.
Right. I guess my concern is that you had, you know, you have a license from, that was issued by this Board, right, that stipulated where alcohol could be consumed. And in practice, that's not really what's happening, right? So I understand coming back to want to, you know, make the practice formalized. But I do think that there is a responsibility to know what your license allows you to do on a certain premises. So I am a little concerned about that. And I do want to understand what the enforcement would be if people were able to take full glasses farther into the vineyard, not just in the picnic table area. I guess, you know, saying that four or five staff members are there, would someone be stationed in the farther out points of the vineyard? Or do they have to be with a staff member to go?
There's always one person in charge of the parking. They'll be standing in that corner where the line of the, there's like a small dirt road that separate that area with the vineyard. And if need to be, we'll provide some more signage.
Or a condition. Having staffing up in the vineyard area.
That, too.
Sorry. Just suggesting about staffing in the sort of the adjacent vineyard area with, while people would be allowed to consume up there. It is pretty close to the tables, and so it is visible, but I understand your concern.
If other people have questions?
Any other questions?
Can I move on? So I just, you know, clarifying like this, the area, so in the vineyard, I haven't been in a few years during the day, but the vines are low, correct? So like if adults were walking through the vineyard, like you can see them.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, sort of disguised behind anything. So from the building itself, you are able to see the entire area that you're requesting?
Yes.
Okay. So I went through, you know, when I was reading this, I had been to the vineyard in, during the previous owner's time owning the business. And we, at that time, there were picnic tables out back. We were allowed to bring bottles of wine out there and have glasses of wine. And we did walk through the vineyard with glasses of wine. And it was a quiet, you know, it was a very beautiful, kind of peaceful place. And it was just like a quiet walking through. So I know that that has been a longstanding practice. It was 2018. I went back and looked through my photos to find when it was. So I know, you know, reading that this was something that was brought to your attention, that it was not included in the license. And, you know, it was this longstanding practice. Like, I can confirm personally that, you know, six years ago, having been there, that was something that was allowed for guests. So, you know, my concerns with it were, you know, being able to see, like see who is on your property and who, you know, is consuming alcohol at the time, like as a way of enforcing, you know, quantity of consumption and who is consuming. As long as that is something that can be monitored and managed, I don't see an issue with expanding it. It, you know, it is a small capacity limit. You know, it's not, you can't have 200 people there, you know. So it is a small capacity limit. And it does seem like something that would be manageable. You know, to Ms. Cassavan's point about, you know, understanding what it is that is on a license and things like that, there, you know, she does have a point there. But I don't have issue with allowing this alteration.
So it's a public hearing. I'll open up to the public. Comments? There's nobody here, so I'll entertain a motion if there are no further questions.
Can I ask another question before we close the hearing?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I know, unrelated to the license, I know in the last time you were before our Board, we talked a little bit about parking, that the street is pretty narrow, right? You can't accommodate parking on the street. How's that going with parking?
Correct.
Are you able to manage the number of people in the lot?
Hundred percent. Nobody parks on the street, not allowed. They have signs everywhere. And that's why we have a gentleman on Saturdays and Sunday that is just making sure that everybody's parked properly and nobody's parking on the street.
Right. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Anything else?
Close the public hearing?
Is there a second?
Second.
Have been moved in second. And all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. The public hearing is closed. Board members, what would we like to do?
I think I still, I am comfortable with it being, with alcohol being served in the picnic areas. I understand that this has been the longstanding practice. I think it's appropriate to include that in the license now. But I am not in favor of it being consumed in the wider vineyard.
Any other comments? So you've answered that everyone can be seen. The areas, I'd like to see signage where they can't go, right? So is that just fenced, everything's fenced off, so they can't go beyond that?
All the way around is fenced off. I mean, if that's something that, you know, is going to be an issue, I don't have a problem with not doing it. It's just, can we just allow supervised tours on that area? Because I would like to have the customers to be able to, like, sign up for a tour and I'll just take them around or stuff like that.
So a condition could be that-
Or like when we're doing harvesting, and then we'll have it supervised.
So I'm one member, right? I mean-
Yeah. So was there any-
It may be that the Board votes three, one, and you'd be fine. Like I said, I'm just one member. From my perspective, I'm just concerned, right, with the consumption farther out from the picnic table areas.
One thing I'd entertain or consider is, in that area, if they were guided, if they were accompanied by an employee, so they're a guided tour, I'd entertain, as long as that condition's there, to be able to have groups of no more than X walking through, six, eight, 10, and have guided tours. I'd be open to that.
I think that's a lot easier to police, right, and to know who's taking what, where, and keep an eye on it.
So if we keep an employee up on that, like the person in charge of the parking, be able to stay there and then monitor who's going out, would that be sufficient? Just have somebody monitoring who's going in and out?
Still leaning towards a guided tour?
I don't know. I mean, I think it's, I just think it's easy to lose track when you have activity on a premises. I think it's easy to lose track of where alcohol's going and who's consuming it. And I just think that, you know, I understand the picnic area. I think that's easier to monitor than, let's say, people wandering off into the vineyard. I mean, maybe it's not as big as I'm thinking it is. Maybe it's not.
We only get like one or two people like a week that walks about 10 feet. It's a long walk if you want to go up there. They just literally walk and then check the vines that are close, and then they take a look at it. Most of them, they come back, either come back to me with a question or something like that. It's not like we get tons of people going out and then disappearing. And technically, we don't like it to go, I had, before I had signs that there's a gate that goes up to the, to the barn that's always closed, because I don't, I don't like people going up to the barn area. And come mid-July, the whole vineyard, it's fenced in and closed up. Nobody can go in through without opening the gate because of the deer. That's when the grapes start getting ripe, and then that's when the deer start coming in. So the whole entire vineyard will be closed up for the entire customers. Nobody would be able to go in without opening the door. And then, then we'll be able to see that, and we'll stop them sometimes.
So it's not detrimental to your business not to have this? Again, I'm one member.
No, I mean, that's-
I'm not trying to make it complicated.
No, we want, we appreciate the entrepreneurial spirit. I just don't hear that it's really used.
Yes. And I just keep going back to, you need to know what's on your permit and make sure that you're operating in accordance with what's on your permit. And I understand the oversight. But again, I just want to make sure that we are solving for a problem that exists. And also, understanding that they, there's already an opportunity to do a one-ounce pour under the state license. So is this really something that needs to take place in order to make sure that their business stays viable? Because that's what we want, right? We want thriving business in town. We definitely want to see your business do well. But again, balancing that with, where's the alcohol on the premises? Who's got eyes on it?
So maybe keep it simple to expand it to effectively do what it had been doing for the picnic area?
Mm-hmm.
And leave it there.
There's also the option of allowing it for guided tours.
I'd be open to guided tours.
So I'm open to guided tours.
The tours with the, you know, the tours in the cellar, and then bring customers out to the vineyard to see the vines, and then the harvest volunteers. And the harvest is something that is also allowed- And the harvest is something is also a longstanding practice prior to their ownership with something, I've never attended it, but I've seen it advertised for customers to sign up to do the harvest. And it was, you know, there's food and wine and things that, you know, so I'd be okay with allowing it in the picnic area and for guided tours of the vineyard. And I think that, you know, kind of is a, a nice compromise between, you know, it's not, it's allowing them to sort of expand the scope of their business without, you know, sort of putting undue like potential for, you know...
That's, that's totally fine.
So it's defined guided tours as having one employee with that group?
Group of however many people you take out on a guided tour. I mean, you can only have 49 people.
Well, sometimes, sometimes we'll, we'll bring like a couple with a picnic basket and a bottle of wine and then we'll set them up in a spot. That's happened before. And would that fall under guided tour?
That's the thing, see, it's happening already even though it's not in the license. That's where I'm getting hung up. And I appreciate the honesty, right? I mean, I, I understand that you're coming to make it right. But I think that we all have to make sure that when a license is issued, whether it's for, you know, alcohol license or it's a car dealership license, like those parameters are put in place for a reason. And if we're not gonna follow them and we're not gonna enforce them, then what's the point of having them? So that's where I'm getting stuck.
Well, I think the challenge is yeah, but, you know, so we're, look, we want you to succeed. You, you, you clearly, you're very thoughtful and thinking of innovative, innovative ways to get people in, to expand their appetite for your business. I, I think the easiest way is to try to make this as bright line as possible, that, that trying to get middle of the road here to get the vineyard in guided tours, I think we can't cover every contingency. My hope would be that if someone had a picnic bag, picnic basket, they'd be in the picnic area. But at least what I'm hearing right now is, is yes, in the picnic area, no problem. And then a willingness to have a guided tour, it can be one with the best said, you have, you're limited. You're not gonna have all 49 people with you in the vineyards, but to have someone there just to oversee that also can see what's going on irrespective of the height of, of the vines and the, and the grapes and all of that. But I think that's the easiest way rather than say, but this, but that, but just say, look, it's guided. And if that, leave it as objective like that, I think it's as clear as we can get, but hopefully still give you flexibility. Does it mean you're, you know, someone is 10 feet behind or looking, guided tours has gotta be practical what that means, but...
Guided tour means there's an employee with a squad of patrons, in my mind.
It's with the group.
Yeah.
You see what's going on. That's the only condition I'd see that, that seems to be that would get everyone, get consensus.
The only other thing I'm hearing is most people walk the 10 feet. So why not just make it the 10 feet and have that be your perimeter?
So picnic area plus 10 feet.
I mean, if that's where you're seeing the most, and you're like, okay, you can't be there because it's not, you know, if that's a logistical...
We can put signs and then have somebody attending that no alcohol beyond the, the, the trellis of the vineyard where all the vines start, so that's very much doable.
Perfect.
Without a staff member, I mean, that's...
Well, like I said, there's always the, the staff that taking care of the parking lot is standing over on that side, because that's where all, everybody parks on, on that side of the...
Do we have consensus? If so, I'd entertain a motion.
Tough motion.
Yeah, it's...
But I'm not making it.
So the motion, and please correct me if I'm doing this wrong, I move the board approve the application of Jean Scott, Scaff, Scaff Vineyard and Winery Incorporated, doing businesses Broken Creek Vineyard, 614 South Street, for an alteration of premises to their farmer's winery pouring permit to include a delineated portion of the picnic area and guided tours of the vineyard.
You could say, or the vineyard provided that, there's a employee that's accompanying that tour. So it's sent, the, just as the picnic area, even if you expanded it, Beth, you said a little further, if everyone goes to that first group of vines, okay, a little more.
That's mostly, there's literally about five lanes that people just walk. Most of people, they walk without their glass. And then that, that wouldn't be a problem if they just walked, left their alcohol on the, on the picnic table and then just walked to the, to the vines, so...
So picnic area, and then if they go to the other delineated portion with the vineyard, they need to be with an employee. And that's the condition for, okay?
Yep.
So that's what you said, that's just to clarify.
Okay.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is under Financial Business to review the status of fiscal 24 expenditures and revenues that Mr. Snowden, Mr. Snowden?
Yes, please. All right, Justin. You're gonna have the presentation up, Justin?
Yeah.
All right, take your time, I didn't want to...
Sorry.
No, don't be sorry. All right. So this evening, I'd like to take the opportunity to review the fiscal year 2024 expenditures and revenues to date, as of June 24th, 25th, depending on when some of the reports were generated. So if you move to the first slide, thank you, Justin. We'll take a look at the expenditures, sort of at a, you know, a very high view at this point in time. In general, we are in a fairly good spot with our expenditures to date. These do include encumbrances, especially for salaries that we intend on paying throughout the year, or projects that, for example, in the capital area, that may not have been fully spent this year, but they'll be expended in future years. So as we're working our way down, these values, again, were grabbed from our Munis software system. And again, there can be a slight timing thing, but this is a good example of where we are at this point in time and pretty similar to where we would be at a similar year at, at this time as well. Expenditures will close for FY24 on July's 12th warrant. So there is still a couple of weeks that departments have to get the associated bills and charges brought in. We can see that in most cases, things are trending as they should, and there hasn't been a significant requirement of the reserve fund transfers from the finance committee's requests as well. If we move on to the next category, the revenues, second slide. All right, taking a look at revenues now. At this point in time, we've collected about 98% of the tax levy, which is pretty typical for where we are. State aid is showing about 92% collected. There is some installments for Chapter 70 unrestricted government aid. So we are expecting another decent chunk in the next week or so to be coming into state aid to bring us to the amount that we recognize there. Utility revenue for the, most of the utilities, the water and sewer, they have surpassed the revenue that was identified or budgeted to be raised from the rates and permits. I'm sorry, for sewer and stormwater, water is, I think, like 40,000 under right now and the solid waste is 30,000 under, but I think by the end of the month, we should have that revenue no problem. So the utilities are tracking very well and in some regards, their expenses are a little bit under as we saw on the previous page. Local receipts right now, we are trending, we are doing quite well with local receipts. It's anticipated that we will be a little over 4 million greater than we initially budgeted. We are, at this point, we've collected more than we did last year throughout the entire of the year. A large part of this is, can be correlated to increased revenue in motor vehicle excise tax. We've seen a significant increase, the highest that we've seen in a number of years in motor vehicle total collected, which is reflected of the growth that we're seeing in, throughout town in the residential units. There's also increased revenue in the investment income and interest. Our, our free cash, that's revenue that we sort of appropriated town meeting. We don't typically use more or less than what we do, cause it was sort of designated to certain articles as approved at town meeting. The reduced levy amount, we're just waiting for a final installment from the, the funding that is provided through Selco, and that is anticipated to be coming by the end of the month, so we'll be meeting that. And the other available funds, this will reflect CPA funding or funds from the cemetery or account transfers. So these had all been moved from the necessary accounts, one to the other. In total, right now, we've received about 99%, 99.8% of budgeted revenue, and we are expected to meet the needs of the town to fulfill FY24's expenditures and revenues. We move on to the next slide. All right, this is an estimate of free cash, which will be certified, and we typically hear back from the state in September. What we have here is a trend starting at the bottom on the left-hand side, 2019, working our way up to 2023, and we have those certified dates. The yellow is what we're estimated, estimating right now for free cash at the end of FY24, which would be roughly $10,756,000, which would be, you know, the highest that the town would have seen to date. I think it's important to note that as the town's finances have grown and we've been able to increase services as well, the, the 5% in order to meet our reserves also grows. So we want to make sure and be mindful that while we do have this revenue in free cash, we still need to make sure we're meeting the policy levels for our reserves and reviewing other alternatives as it's related to extending the override, if possible. So that's a, a general overview, I can answer anything in greater detail if the board would like, just, but I want to provide that snapshot at first.
Any questions? Michelle?
Some questions. So on expenditures, you mentioned capital improvement, some of that is expected to be moved into next year. The other two items that we are covering close to 90% on is utility expenses and municipal expenses. Can you just...
Of course. So let me pull up the, the municipal expenses, if I, a quick snapshot would be the highway. We had a really low winter, so our, there was a lot of additional overtime in the highway budget. So that's an example of a, you know, that's maybe 400 to 500,000, right, from one department there? If you just give me a second, I can pull up a couple other good examples. We are, we typically have a balloon payment in regards to the shared operating expenses or that would fall, depending on which category it is, in the municipal expenses for operating. So that chunk, we see, see sort of like in the first week of July.
We want, one other thing that we can add in here is we have one more full payroll cycle to get through.
Correct.
And, you know, on the town side, you know, that bi-weekly payroll is gonna be, you know, about a million dollars. And then, you know, any associated expenses, year end, we do sick leave buyback for employees, which would, you know, is, you know, doesn't hit until the, you know, middle of July. So while we're, we are more than 90% of the way through the year, we do have a couple more big warrants to get through before we close it out.
If I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
So on the revenue side, with local receipts being about 4 million more than what was budgeted for, that, am I correct in understanding, we made an adjustment to next year's budget to sort of level that out a little bit more? And we always try to be conservative, we don't want to be conservative in the wrong direction, so we try to be conservative in estimating this, but we did make adjustments to sort of bring that closer to what we actually bring in. And then I just have one more on, when it comes to sort of our last, the last slide you presented, with the 5% reserve policy that we have, that is important for, you know, people watching from home, that's an important factor that is considered when our bond rating is established. So, you know, that's, that 5% is something that we as a community always try to maintain. And as you said, as our revenues and our tax levy grows, so does our 5% reserve. So that is just understanding where that comes from.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Just a comment, you know, you know, obviously the budget was well thought out, right? Because we're not looking at deficits, you know, that's one thing you, is you just said, you know, you don't want to make an assumption in the wrong direction, we don't want to come up short. And, and then anything that we have as a turn back that helps us to grow our free cash, and so, you know, it does benefit our, our stability financially to be able to weather downturns or make capital investments or do any number of things to benefit the residents without impacting their tax bill. So I, this is good, this is good news.
It's, it's what we talked about earlier with planning. So we have the financial projection going out many years, this is a small part of that. And every decision that we make in any given year impacts subsequent years, and that's why we've come a long way, where every decision we look at is not only the immediate, immediate impact, but how does it impact the next several years? How does it impact residents? And always looking for ways to do better. And, and the process here has shown that it's good to be prudent and relatively conservative in the approach, but at the same time, change your assumptions, which we have particularly with Schedule A receipts in '25. Couple of questions, investment income?
Yes.
We still getting 4%, 5%? Is that what we're getting? We're not seeing any downturn in that, right? So that's part of the healthy...
Not at this point, yeah, correct.
And then just Moody's bond rating? So what's the interplay between Moody's and S&amp;P? So does that, one stays, one changes, what, how does that play on current bonds?
Yeah, so on current bonds, it doesn't impact us at all.
Okay.
You know, if they adjust our rating, even if it were to go down...
It's prospective, okay.
It's all prospective, and when we access the market, we'll only present the S&amp;P.
Okay.
And, or, you know, unless Moody's would give us a triple A, which they did say it's not off the table that they wouldn't, you know, then we could be a dual-rated community, but that's not our intent, this is more on their side.
So, so if we were dual-rated, the only thing with respect to existing bonds would be if the math works to refinance?
And, yeah, and the...
Future?
And the term of the bond.
Yeah, depending, yeah, you may not be able to where they're, okay?
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Just one more thing on local receipts. We, we know, as we've discussed this evening, we've made some changes in the FY25 model to utilize those resources a little bit better, and it allows us to really preserve the override and, and things like that. The growth has been really exceptional in the last few years and to try to, you know, we did some analysis on the local receipts, so through May, we had collected about a million dollars more in local receipts year over year. And, you know, the, the average, or motor vehicle excise is $25 on a, on a thousand dollars of value, so it's two and a half percent. That means through the first 11 months, the, the tax system recognizes $40 million of more motor vehicle value in the community than was present last year. I mean, that's like, you know, that's a, a number that's really good for us, but, you know, something that we would never forecast, the state would never allow us to budget for, you know, so we are really seeing motor vehicle inflation, right? Like motor vehicles are a lot more expensive than they were two or three years ago. We deal with that when we're buying vehicles, and a vehicle that we used to pay 74 is now 90 or whatever it is. And then, you know, as we did the analysis with MBTA communities and, and look at motor vehicle when it comes to, you know, the recent development in town, we're starting to see some of that, you know, it takes... It takes a while sometimes for someone to transfer their motor vehicle to their new address, you know? Takes a full billing cycle, which normally happens in February unless you get a new car. So now that, you know, you know, the Edgemere Drive-In, you know, Market Basket redevelopment has happened, we're really seeing that new value come and benefit the community.
Those are factors that are really volatile, too. Like there are change, you know, and other things that are in local receipts as our investment income, which is something that is, you know, tied to the markets and totally volatile. So it's something that we have to be really conservative with our estimates because, you know, depending on what happens economically, that could change. So.
Yeah, one of the big difference was we got sub-one percent for a long period of time. Obviously, it's principal balance, too. But, okay. Anything else? There's no action required on that. Next item will be under new business to review and act to approve the warrant to police officer and our dog officer pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-three, for a one-year term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. This item requests that we renew Keith Elms' dog officer warrant as the dog officer in town. This is annually, an annually recurring item requiring our approval every June. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm moved to approve the warrant to dog officer Keith Elms pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-three, for a one-year term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Second.
I've been moved in second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item under new business is to review and act on town manager priorities. Mr. Mizikar.
So I look forward this evening to updating the board on my thoughts and getting your feedback as we head into fiscal year twenty-five for goals and priorities. Asking the board to consider a little bit of a different approach than we've used in previous years, and I'll walk through that as well. And that's where I'd like to start this evening. So some changes to the goal process. Justin, if you can go ahead, a couple of slides. So traditionally, you know, since I've been here, we've worked together between the board and the manager to set annual goals. And this evening, I'm looking to identify annual priorities and broad picture things that we'll work towards. But for a number of reasons, which I've listed here, I would like to work with the board on a shorter cycle to both track, measure, and be transparent about the processes that I've, the things that I've been working on, the processes that we're developing internally, and not just wait till one point at the end of the fiscal year to try to go back and remember everything that we did, document everything that we did, and talk about it in this meeting, so, or in this setting. So, you know, the reasons for the changes I put up there, I think the items that I can present to you on a shorter cycle, a twelve-week cycle, will be much more tangible and understandable and kind of less fluffy, so to speak. When I'm looking out over the course of a year, there's a lot of time to cover and a lot of things that can intervene. And we've always worked together to make adjustments throughout the course of the year. I think a twelve-week cycle being tangible allows us to have a more concrete plan going forward and adapt if we need to, but, you know, more than likely will be stable over that period of time. Transparency, you know, I've come back to the board three times a year and talk about what we've accomplished and what I've been working on, and just try to be more open with what it is that we're doing. Intolerant, you know, just really able to talk things through, be prudent, be able to be adaptable throughout the course of the year. As we accomplish things, how can we build upon them? As things change within the community, how do we adapt to those things? So tolerant, being, you know, adaptable throughout the course of the year. Justin, you can go ahead. So I've spent a lot of time, you know, working and thinking about really how I spend my time and where I can provide the greatest value to the community. And this is something I really enjoy gauging with other city and town managers and staff within the office and talking about where that true value is. And I've taken the time to kind of quantify that, you know, for what I think is really most important for me to think about and spend my time on. So building and enhancing the culture of, you know, the organization, the staff, and how we go about serving the residents, shaping and confirming the vision and strategy for the community. So really working with the leadership team to make sure that all aspects of the organization are moving in the direction that the board wants us to move in and that we're developing strategy that's responsive to the priorities that the board is setting. And then working outside of the organization on behalf of the board and on behalf of the town, whether it's with the private sector, through economic development, or intergovernmental with different levels of government, other cities and towns, being the face of the government in those settings. Taking the time to build the leadership team and support emerging leaders, it's something that we've focused on a lot. It's becoming harder and harder to be competitive in the marketplace, to hire the right talent. And we've found great success over the last few years in hiring and helping build people into roles that they can succeed in and allowing them to grow within the organization over time. And this is something that I really enjoy doing, whether it's meeting with new employees after part of their onboarding process or participating in initiatives like the Shrewsbury Way Emerging Leaders Academy that we hosted for the first time for assistant manager and mid-level manager positions. It's really important that I spend, you know, fifteen percent of my time or roughly that amount of time really building the team. And of course, working with the board, understanding what you're hearing from the community, engaging with you, and developing things from the priorities that you have all set. And then providing that back office constituent service, helping you work through questions and concerns that residents have brought you, building strategy for these meetings and the support materials, things like that. So this is where I, you know, these are the areas and the amount of time that I feel I can provide the greatest value to the community. And then, you know, so these are, in my mind, are very stable from year to year and how I kind of think about my day and week and monthly schedule. So I look forward to, Justin, if you can go ahead one slide. So when I look forward to fiscal year twenty-five through engaging with the leadership team, engaging with the office directly, we've established five areas of focus to work on and seek out and develop various improvements throughout the course of the year. And the blue on the screen is how they tie to the twenty thirty strategic plan. So I don't think there's a lot of surprises in these five broad areas of focus because in some ways they tie back to my role, and in other ways they link into the twenty thirty strategic plan. So I'm not going to go through all this, but I'll talk about the high level. Just continued financial stability and resource management for the community. We talked about strong finances. That takes a lot of effort. So working with Mr. Snowden in developing financial strategy. And, you know, this year, we all know we need to really look at the override model and how we're going to continue to provide the greatest value to the community and minimize the impact on taxpayers. So we will be continuing to, you know, update that model and look at long-term planning. So the second area is really trust, community engagement, and communication. And I think local governments across the country and across the world have had to spend some more time focused on building trust and transparency with their communities in recent years than maybe we have in the past. We've, we've always enjoyed kind of the highest rating of any level of government throughout the community, but civil discourse has changed over the last few years. So making sure that I'm present in the community, working through critical projects, programs, events, and initiatives is an area that I think I can do better in, and I want to focus on making sure that we have better access for the public for information, engaging directly with the community to really build that trust and transparency that we all work on on a day-to-day basis. Then kind of focusing internal within the town, building the organization organizational culture and continuing to develop the workforce, as I talked about before on the roll slide. Justin, if you can move forward. So continuing our efforts, and I think we can do some meaningful work in the area of diversity, equity, inclusion. I think it's time that staff presents to the board some critical plans that I think we have gaps in, that I'm going to talk about my work on in the first twelve weeks. And I see the opportunity to use the DEI lens and make sure that as we implement new policies, priorities, and programs, that DEI is a critical part of the establishment or refinement thereof. And then efficiency and innovation in operations. We always have the opportunity to leverage technology and other new, and other business processes to be more efficient and modernize. We'll continue to work on those efforts throughout the course of the year and kind of stabilize how we do things within the office and find ways to innovate and be more efficient. So that's kind of my bigger picture as I look at more of a twelve-month to twenty-four-month period of the key areas that we need to work on. And I'll just walk through three core objectives that I would like to pursue within the first twelve weeks or so of the fiscal year and then report back to the board on. So these all tie in. So I've, you know, within the three main areas, I've identified the focus areas on the previous slide where this work ties into, and I have been able to draw ties to all five areas of focus. So within the organizational culture focus area, I want to establish better internal communications. We focused a lot over the last few years of enhancing our external communications to residents. So I think it's really important to make sure that town staff are aware of the initiatives that the board is working on, what other departments are working on, and really make sure that they feel well-connected to the broader organization and the work that they do. The second part of that is, as I look back at our implementation of the twenty thirty strategic plan, we jumped right into goals and strategies and the work, the what, like, what work that we're going to accomplish and measuring that, bringing performance measures into it. I think we missed really circling employees and talking about values and how we treat each other, we treat residents, and how we work together as we produce the outcomes that we've been able to. So I want to re-entrench, refocus on values internal to the organization. So the big area, trust, community engagement, communication, very similar to the broad focus area. I want to establish regular public office hours so residents can identify a time where they don't have to reach out to the office. They can come in. Maybe it's I go out into the community, maybe residents come into the town hall at various regular opportunities. So I want to make it easier to be able to connect with me. I want to present myself and be more active during the major initiatives. I wish I would have been more president, at present, at some of the earlier MBTA community meetings, some of the community information sessions on the larger warehouse projects and initiatives and larger residential developments that occurred in the community. So I want to be at those and be able to provide perspective and support staff. And then the last area is initiative that I'm looking to join with the board on and really enhance what we do at your meetings as far as providing perspective into what staff do on a regular basis. So having regular department updates at meetings, we've done this on and off over the last few years. Find other ways to illustrate more regular updates on finances, operations, human resource initiatives that we're undertaking. I think there's plenty of opportunity to do that. And I'm going to take the time over the next twelve weeks to really think that through and develop a variety of initiatives that I think we could use in this public setting to use your venue as a meeting, a public meeting, to be able to share more with the community. And then finally, the third area, organization development and planning. It's been a while since, you know, twenty nineteen, we implemented a new classification and compensation study. We're five years beyond that. We need to take a step back, look at where we are with regards to that. I think it's also time to look at the broader picture for staffing needs assessment. We've had departments submit updated staffing plans each and every year as they submit their budget. We need to coalesce that information and provide some priorities and insight into that for the board, and we look forward to do that. You know, critical vacancy within the Department of Public Works, and that's an initiative that I need to focus on and repost the position and do some recruitment and find the right person to fit there. We weren't successful in our first round of that, and I'm happy to say we reposted again this afternoon. So we're looking for quality candidates to be able to help us in the area of public works. This last area is my tie back into what I was saying about DEI. I think there's a couple really critical areas that staff can help the board in your decision-making process when it comes to critical areas. So economic development being one of them, housing production being another one of them, and human capital strategies. So there's probably some others, but this is really taking the time to document some of the things that we've worked with the board on, some of the initiatives or practices that we use at a staffing level in making decisions and put them into place. And I see this as an opportunity as we take this on to make sure that DEI, we work with the committee where necessary, but it's a lens that each and every strategy, program, practice, policy that we develop includes. So this is definitely a new approach and something that I would be committed to for the year and receiving feedback from the board throughout, talking with you at our regular meetings about how it's working out, moving away from it if it doesn't work, but continuing it if it does. So look forward to feedback and thoughts in our discussion tonight.
College, questions?
Happy to go first.
Go ahead, Carlos.
Thank you. Kevin, thank you for, thank you for this. I certainly look forward to seeing how this new goal cycle will play out across the twelve weeks. I know that's something that was a takeaway, a direct takeaway of yours from recent leadership development opportunities that you've taken. So really appreciate just that growth mindset that you have and that you are implementing and working on that. I think that all of these goals and focus areas are excellent. I think, as you touched on, building trust within the community, focusing on community engagement and enhancing the communication that we have with residents, and also internally is so critical in order to get information out there to resident, the proper information out there to residents and to improve public perception and build trust. I think that that's so critical, and I think that residents will really appreciate that once, you know, and I think over the years, we've seen improvement there, but just continued improvement. I think that's something we hear often. So I look forward to that. I look forward to seeing and hearing from you how office hours go. I know, you know, we've recently restarted our office hours, and we've gotten some engagement, maybe not as much as we've hoped, but I'm hoping that folks do take you up on that opportunity to talk and speak with you directly about their concerns and their questions. I know that you, even if you didn't formally have that in the past, I know you've always been available for those conversations. So really, really appreciate that. I had so many, so many thoughts, but I think just lastly, you touched on the DEI piece. I am very much appreciative that that's in here. And I think just as, I know that, I'm sure that you are fully on top of it, but I think when folks hear the term DEI, they kind of bundle it all together as one term. But I think it's very intentional that we need, that we focus on each of the words there, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so I'm very thankful that that's something that you will be focused on. Overall, I think that these are excellent, and I, like I said, I look forward to seeing how, you know, the next twelve weeks go and how this new model works for us, works for you.
Other comments or questions?
So I, I appreciate this, you know, like Mr. Garcia said, you're sort of always looking at ways to improve and improve your, your performance, improve departments, improve. improve departments, improve how we work together as a board and as, with the Town Manager's Office and town staff. And I think, you know, something that I've struggled with in the two years that I've been here is, you know, the goal-setting and then reviewing performance at the end of a year. You know, so much happens in a 12-month period of time here at, you know, in Town Hall. It is constantly changing, and I think that this 12-week cycle of goal-setting is something that will allow us to sort of address things more specifically and while keeping sort of longer-term, bigger-picture things at the forefront, but being able to really dig down. I appreciate, you know, the, you're constantly, you know, working with staff to grow and build and improve, and it's really a culture that is thriving at Town Hall. And that is something I feel like does come from, from the top, so I appreciate that. I do like, and here you need to talk about cross-departmental collaboration and reducing silos. None of us, nobody works in a vacuum, and improving that communication between, you know, town departments, our board, different committees in town, that internal communication, sort of improving that. I think, you know, we've seen leaps and bounds of the external communication with residents and people, you know, I hear from people in the community, like, oh, I have that newsletter that I get in the mail every, you know, three months, I read that every time it comes, and thank you so much for that, and, you know, it's, I've, I've found information on the website because of it and different things that are happening in the community. So that has, you know, come so far. You know, Ms. Lucia in your office has done a phenomenal job with that and all of the staff. But working on that internal communication, I think, is really a good, a good goal. And I'm looking forward to seeing how this works out for us, so thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. I know that we had a conversation about this after you came back from the Athenia program, and I'm not surprised to see you implementing this. As usual, your focus remains on improving people and improving yourself. I heard in your comments earlier, reflection. I think you've done a lot of reflecting since you participated in that program. And it's, I hear, okay, these are things that I could have done better, and these are ways that I can be more engaged and involved in the community directly, and those are things that are really important and valuable. And I think that it's going to be appreciated by the public. I think that trust, external trust with residents is so critical. People don't go into local government or run for these seats because they're looking for power, right? We're looking to serve the public and we care deeply about the town, and this is a business. And residents are the customers, and customer service is critical. And I see improvement in that area embedded in the core objectives. The town should be the most trusted source of information for residents about local issues, and I don't know that that's necessarily the case all the time right now. And so how do we go about making that true? And I see that embedded in these goals. Those daily interactions, those abilities to connect with people one-on-one or in small group settings go a long way toward repairing any public trust that might be damaged and building on the public trust that we already have. And then the organizational development planning piece, we've had so many discussions on this and the staffing needs, and I know that when I walk away from those discussions, I'm worried about making sure that the people that we have in place stay here with us and then we're able to grow them as professionals and continue to keep them engaged and wanting to work here. But it's, it's more than that, right? It's also looking at the compensation that people receive. Are we losing people to lateral moves? You know, just listening to Ms. Ordang present at the Finance Committee public hearing, you know, she has plenty of information about why people leave their positions in town from exit interviews, and that is critical for our board to look at and to understand so that we are able to, you know, present to town meeting through the Personnel Board or through the manager, this is what we need in order to continue to bring and attract the best and the brightest to Shrewsbury. Because resident services are what's going to suffer, right? If we don't have those people, if we're not able to attract them. And I think there's no greater example of that than the DPW position that's been empty now since February. And when a position like that goes empty for a long period of time, it really makes you think about what's the root cause, right? Because Shrewsbury is a great place to work, we know that. This is a great team at Town Hall, morale is good, people seem generally happy to be here. So what's the underlying cause? And I like that this plan is going to drill down into that and try to, try to address some of those issues so that we can make sure that we continue to be an employer of choice. Our strength is in our people, right? Including you, Mr. Mizikar, and I appreciate the work that you put into this. I guess my, my parting question is, this is not 12 weeks' worth of work. I think it's more like six months, so I don't know what the plan is, when it spills over, if it can spill over. There's a lot of really important objectives here that I think will be longer-term than 12 weeks. You're ambitious.
Sure. Good questions. How will you align these objectives with your staffs? So obviously, we have the desire, the outcome areas, the focus areas, but how will you roll this through the organization? Because you can't do this alone, obviously, so how will you roll that out?
Yes, so I think one aspect of the going to a 12-week planning process is that this will be a little bit more of my work than the 12-month process, right? When it was a 12-month annual goal process, when I got back to the performance reviews, and I'm not saying it then to just say it, I'm not saying it now, like this was, that was the work of the whole team, and there is a lot more of this that will be me doing this work. That being said, as far as tying things together, it will tie very closely together with the assistant managers, the executive leadership team, like the HR director. It'll tie a little bit less to some aspects of the organization broadly, but they will still be tied to the strategic plan, right? That's, that's the ultimate goal. So I've kind of narrowed my, the breadth of my work to make sure it's more mine. But we have the strategic plan, which is the organization's, and that's where they will tie in.
Okay. So one comment to what Beth was saying, and then I'll go to, I think, the most important objective of the three. But one of the important reasons to keep employees is because the replacement cost is 1.5 to two times whatever that salary was of the employee leaving in terms of lost knowledge, lost efficiencies and like. And you want to create a culture where employees want to stay, they want to grow, they want to thrive. One of the concerns that I have, though, with your ability to do this, not the talent level, but the time. And I, an area that needs to go and look at our staffing and look at if there are any gaps in terms of areas that we need as we continue to move forward with our strategic plan and as a community and as needs change, are there areas that we should be looking at as well to bolster? So we look to empower our staff, that was a big hallmark of the strategic plan. That's been a huge part of Shrewsbury forever, where we had long-tenured employees that went to town meeting and had been around for 30, 40 years, high performers, and we've been able to keep them, and we want to continue to do that. But we also realize that your daily needs, you're pulled in so many different directions. I want to make sure, we all want to make sure that you have the skills around you to be able to continue to do and/or delegate. And you have a great team, but we have 40,000 residents. We have a growing community, we have a smart community, we have a ever-changing regulatory landscape, residents' needs landscape, and we just want to make sure that we look at what we have today and what we need tomorrow and not be reactive, but be proactive. So it's beyond, you know, it's anecdotal evidence, right? The DPW director, you know what you put for a salary, we know if, who are comparators we think they are, it seems to be there, but not a lot of people apply. I think it's taking a step back, looking at who we are, looking at expectations, looking at the market, looking at other towns and cities. We have a lot of innovation here, but to continue down that track, but make sure that you have that ability not only to be in the trenches, but to be the thinker. And that's what a lot of this is, is thinking, but you're also in the trenches on a regular basis. And how can we extricate you from, you're going to be doing, there's no doubt about it, but to have that time to also think and strategize, and it's really hard when you're also mostly in the weeds. So I think that's very important, the organizational development process, that we empower our staff. I've seen tremendous growth in the Town Manager's Office with, in the five years that I've been doing this, all of us have. You continue to stretch the employees, give them opportunities, we need to continue to do that. But is that enough? Okay? So I think it's important that the three-to-five-year staffing needs assessment is, yeah, three to five years, but also immediate. Do we have what we need now? Do we have what we need now so everything on your list you can do in 12 weeks, 24, 36, whatever that it is? Or should we be having that conversation? We do things very efficiently as a community, there's no doubt that will continue, but let's just make sure that we have all the tools that we need and look at it. And we haven't done that in a while. And look at who we have and just a couple other things, you know, succession planning or career planning. Can we do that? Do we do that? I don't know the answer to all of that. Succession planning, it's not something you want to have, but it's something that we should do and regularly understand even as a board, who are, you know, who are players? We have single, we have single points of failure, we have single incumbents, we have folks with, that are very good in their position, folks that we see tremendous growth on. How does that all fit together? And how can that help you in the longer term? To provide more opportunity at the higher level and then execute depending on the given day, but it's not always being in the weeds. So human capital strategies are the backbone of any organization in making sure that we have continuous improvement, continuous collaboration. And we do that with other departments. The consolidation of DPW, I think fosters even more collaboration, which we talked about at a Select Board Roundtable, one of the benefits of housing the true DPW in one location. It facilitates efficiencies, that's what you strive to do, and you also empower all. So you're looking for all to thrive again, but focus, all of these things are great. Look forward to hearing from you. Have organizations come truncated version of what they do at FinCon? But also really look at what does staffing look like? What should it look like? Doesn't mean we change it, but what should it look like? If you want, if you, what limits you from achieving these? That'd be helpful to know. But I think it's good, let's see how it works. And, you know, we had 12 weeks, it's going to be even halfway through. Every six weeks you provide an update, some things are going to be in process and making progress, some are going to be done. See how it works. So it's good. Any other comments or questions? Feedback? Are we in a position to vote on these?
One question.
Sure.
How will this impact our review process of the manager? Because now our instrument no longer matches up. I feel like every year we fix our instrument.
I think we need to, we need to look at the instrument again. It's an evolving process.
So maybe we need a couple of members to work with Ms. Ordang on the instrument, the evaluation tool. Because it's, the time evaporates, like before you know it, you're time to use it and you don't have it.
Yeah, I mean, the form we had a few years ago was too cumbersome, was 10 pages long, with 10 categories, and some of them, to get a four, you literally would have had to been able to part the red sea. So we want to have a flexible document that provides meaningful feedback, but meaningful measurements, so.
And maybe we all try to provide some feedback instead of once a year, you know, to your point. I mean, I keep, I keep the agendas, I like, I have my little system, right? So that I can kind of go back and remember the highlights when I'm writing an evaluation at the end of a year, but it is challenging to fit it all in. I mean, Google Forms told me it was too long anyway.
Informal, right?
You should think about how we want to do it.
So I can take the action and talk to Christina and then come back, and then we can have a couple members work with her on the form. The form, we've tried, we tried to streamline it, I think this year was more functional, but it wasn't perfect. But it was, provided more meaningful feedback than trying to fit in a very inflexible set of rubrics that were really difficult sometimes to fit in what you had done with what was described. And I think we can align an evaluation tool into this together with a strategic plan for organizational goals as well as individual goals. So I'll take that action and then bring it back, and we can figure out the door. Okay? So if there are no more questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion with respect to Agenda Item 10.
Motion to accept the Town Manager priorities as presented. Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is under Agenda Item 11. It is the, to review and act on a salary adjustment for the Town Manager. So I will describe the process that was utilized. We know back in May, actually it was April 26th, 23rd, we presented Mr. Mizikar with his review. But as part of the fiscal '24 performance appraisal cycle, effective, let me just read the memo that went out that was applicable to all non-union personnel. So effective July 1st, 24 salary and wage adjustments have been determined based on the approved budget during the annual town meeting. 20, May 2024, town meeting members adopted the Personnel Board's recommendation for a 2% cost of living adjustment known as a COLA for all non-union personnel. This decision was informed by data from comparable communities, union contracts for town and school employees, and the Consumer Price Index. In addition to the COLA, the following performance increase adjustments beyond the COLA were also given to employees depending on their performance level. So if an employee did not meet expectations, they didn't get anything beyond the 2% COLA. New employees would get 1% in addition to 2%. If an employee met expectations, it'd be an additional 2%. Another category meets plus expectations, 2.75%, and exceeds expectations would be an additional 3.25%. There's also for any employee that met expectations through exceeds expectations would receive a one-time bonus that would not go to base salary, ranging from $525 for meeting expectation to meets plus expectation to $715 and exceeds expectations at $1,425. That, those one-time bonuses were funded from ARPA, correct? So those, just to clarify, were not taxpayer dollars, these were allocated as part of our plan. So with Mr. Mizikar's review, he had received a 3.4, which was between exceeds expectations and outstanding, but it's calibrated slightly different to what I just had read. So what it, what, when I calibrate it to the standards that I just read, it's meets plus expectations. So it would be the 2% plus the 2.75%. So Mr. Mizikar's salary, fiscal '24 salary, is $221,192.44. And the recommendation based on his review, based on what was applied, would be an increase of $10,506.64, which is 4.75% plus a one-time payment of $715. That falls within what everyone, non-union personnel would be getting this year, and this is based on what had been presented and talked in public with Mr. Mizikar's strong performance. Any questions or comments? Did I miss anything? If not, I'd recommend or entertain a motion with respect to Mr. Mizikar's salary to increase his salary from $221,192.44 to $231,699.08 with a one-time payment of $715.
So moved?
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great to talk salary in public. Next item on the agenda is under Item 12. It's to review and act on the following Town Manager appointments. Adam Cameron, 192 Prospect Street, to a seat on the Commission on Disabilities with a three-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2027. Kenneth Palito, Aide to Tasset Circle, to a seat on the Conservation Commission with a three-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2027. Aaron Howard, 41 Venus Drive, to a seat on the Historical Commission with a three-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2027. And Melissa McKenna, 871 Main Street, to a seat on the Historical Commission with a three-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2027. Mr. Mizikar, anything else to add at all?
No.
Okay. Any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the board confirm the Town Manager's appointments as outlined in Agenda Item Number 12.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, under Agenda Item 13. This item requests the board to reappoint incumbent members to boards and commissions. Pursuant to our Policy 28, incumbent members were asked if they were interested in reappointment. All of the members that I'll be reading shortly indicated that they were. At the same time, consistent with our policy, a general call for interest was issued on the town website and shared via news flashes. This was posted on May 1st, 2024, and reshared on May 14th and May 20- This was posted on May 1st, 2024 and reshared on May 14th and May 28th, 24, and June 4th and June 6th, 2024. Only one person received a letter of interest, Historic District Commission, which we'll take up separately, under Item 14. No letters of interest were received for the positions listed above. So the only thing I'd recommend, I'll read them real quickly just for those at home, so bear with me one second. So we're going to review and act on the following Select Board appointments. Beth Shay Bryant, 39 Woodway Drive, to a seat on the Affordable Housing Board of Trustees with a two-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2026. Martha Gannon, 29 Park Street, to a seat on the Affordable Housing Board of Trustees with a two-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2026. John Segelnic, 25 Lexington Road, to a seat on the Community Preservation Committee with a three-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2027. Deborah Mooney, 41 Deerfield Road, to a seat on the Community Preservation Committee with a three-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2027. Bindu Gupta, 21 Wachusett Circle, to a seat on the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Belonging Committee with a three-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2027. Michael Hale, 8 Wesley and Terrace, to a seat on the Retirement Board with a three-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2027. I want to ask that we take our Town Council separately. Next are the constables. John G. Anant, 14 Lamplighter Drive, is a constable with a one-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2025. Raju Anant, 14 Lamplighter Drive, is a constable with a one-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2025. Robert Esposito, 230 Maple Avenue, is a constable with a one-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2025. And John J. Manzi, 20 Hillside Drive, is a constable with a one-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2025. So thanks for indulging me, just wanted to read out all of their names. Any questions or comments? If not, the only one we'll take out separately because it's, we didn't follow Policy 28 with respect to Town Council, so we'll just take that separately in a second. If not, if there are no questions or comments, entertain a motion.
I move the Board appoint Board and Committee members as outlined on the Agenda Item Number 13, with the exception of Item 13G.
Is there a second?
Second.
I've been moved in second and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And then same process, but we appoint Town Council on an annual basis, but we don't look out for other Town Councils as part of Policy 28. So Stephen F. Madouse, 100 Front Street, Worcester, Massachusetts, as Town Council with a one-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
I've been moved in second and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 14, so as we had discussed, give me one second here. So under Agenda Item 14, give me one second. Okay, there we go. To review and act to appoint three members to the Historic District Commission, as I just mentioned, we had received a letter from an interest in addition to the incumbent. So we have four individuals up for a three-year term. This on the Historic District Commission. This item requests the Board to appoint three members to the HTC out of the four applications pursuant to the Board's Policy 28, similar to what I just mentioned. Incumbent members with terms expiring June 30th, asked if they were interested, all said yes, and then we received the additional applicant. Same news flashes, so I'm not going to read all of those again. So like we do with other boards, there was, from Justin Dobson, sent to all of us separately a poll, which only he received the results of, and the three with the highest amount of points would be elected to these positions or appointed to these positions and based on the feedback from all members that we received right before the meeting, it would be Whitney Andrews, Alan Taylor, and Shannon Noly received the highest revotes because they get all the same number of years. I don't, we don't have to go stagger terms like we will with a sustainability committee. So those are the three, we appreciate all who applied or reapplied for this position and encourage them to apply for future opportunities with the town. So again, Whitney Andrews, Alan Taylor, and Shannon Noly, highest three vote total. Is there a motion?
I move to appoint the following three members to the Historic District Commission to a three-year term set to expire June 30th, 2027. Whitney Gedecky Andrews, Alan Taylor, and Shannon Noly. Second.
I've been moved in second and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is Item 15. Just give me one second here. And 16, so similar, similar balloting process, but I'll go through each. For Agenda Item 15, we were, this agenda item is to review and act to appoint six members to the Sustainability Committee with two members serving an initial three-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2027, two members serving an initial two-year term to, set to expire on June 30th, 2026, and two members serving an initial one-year term set to expire on June 30th, 2025. Similarly, went through the voting process where we were given a ballot, there were nine total applicants and we ranked them one through six, and then the votes were tabulated by Mr. Dobson and then sent to me right before the meeting. So I haven't had a great chance to look at them, so bear with me one second here. So based on what the, the way we'll break this out, the two applicants receiving the highest, the three-year terms will be Mia Lombardi and Melissa Hollenback. The next two members of the Sustainability Committee will be Ramesh Razdan and Andrew Croxford. And then the next two, this would be for the one year set to expire, based on the tabulated votes, would be Matthew Karas and Barbara Feiner. So those, again, I thank all who applied, appreciate their interest and please consider applying for other opportunities, we always have openings on boards and commissions. So to recap, Mia Lombardi, Melissa Hollenback, June 30th, 2027. Ramesh Razdan, Andrew Croxford, June 30th, 2026. And Matthew Karas and Barbara Feiner, June 30th, 25.
So moved. Second.
I've been moved in second and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is Agenda Item 16. So as part of the Sustainability Committee, the seventh member of the Sustainability Committee is a high school rising junior or senior. We had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven applicants, we appreciate all of them. Similar approach where we received a list of all seven and we sent back our tabulation to, or our vote to Mr. Dobson and he tabulated in the individual receiving the highest number of votes, it's Kaylee Gale. And again, we thank all of the others and encourage them to continue to stay active, great resumes, could have picked any one of these young men or women and we would have been in great shape. So thank you and please consider other opportunities, but we have been only able to select one and it's Kaylee Gale.
I move to appoint Kaylee Gale to the Sustainability Committee to serve a one-year term set to expire June 30th, 2025. Second.
I've been moved in second and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Agenda Item 16. Where am I? 16 now, we did 16, now I'm 117 now. Correspondence, fantastic. Got ahead of myself, we're behind. So correspondence, if there are no other matters, we'll go to correspondence, starting with Agenda Item Number 17. Most of these, I'll read them largely related to the hearing that we had with Spectrum's application for a franchise license. That will have a second hearing on this at our second meeting in July. So email dated June 9th, 2024 from Donna Messier, 19 Bell Ridge and Drive regarding Spectrum and their license application. Item 18, email dated June 10th, 2024 from Victoria Flynn San Coran, 11 Founders Road, regarding charter in Shrewsbury. Item 19, email dated June 10th, 2024 from Michael Jasinski for Flamango Circle regarding charter, Spectrum Cable TV franchise proposal feedback. Next item, email dated June 10th, 2024 from Marla Ledue, 30 Washington Street regarding her feelings on charter's application. Item 21, email dated June 10th, 2024 from Larry Nelson Jr., 316 Oak Street, comments on the franchise, Spectrum's franchise application. Item 22, so noted. Item 22, email dated June 10th, 2024 from Christian Halyer, 43 Park and, Park Street regarding Spectrum Charter's application, so noted. Agenda Item 23, email dated June 11th, 2024 from Nancy Monahan, 55 Howe Avenue, regarding charter communications for Shrewsbury. Item 24, so noted. Item 24, email dated June 11th, 2024 from Stephanie Crane, 6 Pine Lands Avenue regarding charter proposal, so noted. Item 25, email dated June 14th, 2024 from Jim O'Neill, 6 Victoria Circle regarding charter, so noted. Item 26, email dated June 14th, 2024 from Diana Warner, 13 Dalton Ave, regarding Selco versus Spectrum, so noted. Item 27, email dated June 14th, 2024 from Scott Nolan, 20 Bosworth Drive regarding 142 Clinton Street, so noted. He asked for a response back, which I'd like to work together on and I'll follow with you tomorrow and copy the board, so noted. Item 28, email dated June 17th, 2024 from Callan McAnally, 31 Rockwell Drive regarding proposed Spectrum charter franchise, so noted. Email 29, email dated June 18th, 2024 from Benjamin Mousher's, 12 Pheasant Hill Drive regarding Shrewsbury. And to generally characterize all of the responses that we received, generally asked us to stay, stay with Selco and not vote in favor of charter, but that's the gist of all of them, so I didn't read every nook and cranny, but that is the gist of all of them as I read them and then looked at them again. So that is all we have in our agenda this evening. If there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
I've been moved in second and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you for joining us, see you at our next meeting. Good night.